Great, thank you. The Wenham Select Board is back in open session at approximately 6:42 PM. We're at the portion of the agenda for public comment. This is for any public comments on matters, on matters that are not specifically listed later in the agenda. I would just point out that one of the things on the agenda is the issue item D of town meeting venues. And so we would entertain for up to two minutes per person, any public comment on any issue that's on someone's mind that isn't on the agenda as a specific item. Are there any such comments? None in the room? And do we have any folks on Zoom, Joe?
No, no hands or wrists.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So moving on to Town Administrator's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of updates this evening. First being, I'm not sure the board may remember, but some time ago, we were awarded a $43,000 energy efficiency grant to replace some windows at the Iron Rail. So we have received that grant. We've done the competitive bid process and selected a vendor and issued a notice to proceed where they'll be replacing 16 windows over at the Iron Rail starting next week. I was finally able to connect with Hannah Bowen. We're planning on sitting down next week to, you know, just have a general introduction to each other and have a cup of coffee and also discuss any needs that Wenham may have. So if you have any things you want me to bring up, please let me know. In addition, she's planning on being at the next select board meeting, which I said was tentatively June 2nd, I mean July 2nd, excuse me, to, you know, to further communicate with the select board and introduce herself. So coming out of town meeting, as you know, the TLP, which is a tax exempt lease purchase agreement, was authorized by town meeting and further authorized by the select board to authorize me to sign on their behalf. So we had submitted all the signatures. The financing was in place. We were approved and everything squared away. So the project, that was the final piece. The project is moving forward with the HVAC update geothermal. So really, next week is when we're going to start to see, folks will start to see some changes out there. First and foremost will be, we anticipate over the course of the week, there will be two 40-foot trailer containers dropped off and one 30-yard dumpster. They're going to actually occupy the space, the six parking spaces directly in front of Town Hall. All the contractor parking and lay down area will be up in the back like we originally discussed. However, I'd allow that change due to, it was just trying to walk the demolition debris and everything across the parking lot and up the hill was just, would have been too much for the contractor. And also, you know, as we're kind of peeling back the onion and they're laying out the work that needs to be done, you know, the demolition is pretty extensive. So we're having to move more stuff than originally anticipated. So ESG is working with us. They've essentially donated a 40-foot trailer that we can use as storage. So it will be secured, locked storage. Obviously, they're not going to put anything of, you know, high value in there, but it will be a good place to free up some room so that they can demo. So, you know, that's going to be, that'll start next week, the 26th is a Thursday. Town Hall will be closed to the public for walk-ins. However, staff will remain available via phones or email throughout the day. That's going to be the day that we kind of make the flip, the final switch where operations on the first floor will be mostly moved out throughout the week next week, but we'll continue to operate on the first floor. And then on Thursday, when we'll be closed and when we reopen again that Monday, the first floor will be closed to the public entirely so that the contractors can start demolition.
No feedback. I think it'd be kind of interesting if every, either once a month or twice a month, you have pictures taken and put it in the Hamilton Wenham News.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Just so people say, oh, my goodness, this is a big deal.
It is a big deal. When you hear HVAC, myself included, you're kind of thinking, just swapping these things out. But like, for example, that the hallway from wall to wall, the whole ceiling has to be removed, you know, just to give you an idea of how invasive the demolition is. So it's, you know, and similarly, and particularly the first floor, because you're getting all the equipment and pipes and stuff. A, you got to take the bad pipes out. B, you got to put the new pipes in and they got to get up to the second floor. So yeah, it's a pretty big project. And so let's see, we, so the other thing is the Karen Wolf Memorial Garden. So that has been, again, bid. We have selected a vendor. It is Landscape Planners LLC. They are starting next week with Iron Rail will be, Iron Tree will be taking down some trees in the area. However, the main work is going, is paused until school is out of session, at which point we will, you know, start that project.
Are you talking about Bukeur?
Yep, the Bukeur, yeah. And then one thing about that project is there, we've had a couple of residents reach out with concerns about the perennial plants that are in that plot. And we're thinking, and, you know, I'm open to feedback, and I don't see the harm in it. And once school's out of session to offer a couple hours one Saturday morning where residents can go and the fence comes down, residents can go and take whatever perennials they want. Kate went out and assessed the situation. She says, given the perennials that we're talking about, they don't, they're not going to survive transport very well. So it's not something we're thinking of maybe, you know, taking them ourselves and creating a pickup spot here in Town Hall. But it's, she said, the likelihood of them dying in transporting and trying to keep them for any length of time is high. So, I mean, I don't see the problem in that, but I'm open to feedback. And I don't have a decision tonight, but just throw that out there on your radar. And I believe that is all I have for you tonight.
Yes, Gary.
Just question, Steve. So for the public's information, once the contract construction starts, access to the second floor will be strictly by the elevator? Or are we opening up the back stairs? Or how will people get in and out?
Yeah, good question. So the, the way the public enters the building should remain unchanged. You come through the front door and then you'll also be able to come in through this, I guess. So you'll access the front. If you need to use the elevator, you'll come into the front door like you always do. There'll be signage up that if you want to take the stairs up to the second floor, the stairwell that is in the front of the building remains used, remains dedicated use for employees and public that wish to visit the Town Hall. Contractors will have use of the elevator with pre-coordination with, with staff, but they'll have, they'll have dedicated use of the front building that's on the street side of the building. And then, then once they move upstairs to the first floor, they'll use that stairwell will be dedicated for the contractors. So through the whole project, the public will continue to access the building through the back, very similarly to how they do it now.
Steve, did you say that the July 2nd is our next meeting? That's a Wednesday or is it Tuesday, July 1st?
Maybe I meant to say July.
I just wanted to check.
Yep, you're right. It's Tuesday, July 1st. Which actually, that brings up another, just a comment for later in the meeting, to remember to set our summer meeting dates. Part of the work is that the Town Hall will be, you know, basically off limits for public meetings for all extensive purposes. So, you know, the board expressed, it is at least for first couple of meetings to go to a virtual format, all virtual format. So, you know, with that in mind, we might want to set a tentative calendar for the next three, four meetings to get us through the summer, maybe towards the end of the meeting, like, like you do sometimes.
Yeah, and I think it's an agenda item on one of, one of those July meetings. We should have an item discussing a plan for potentially doing in-person meetings during this HVAC project that wouldn't be here, obviously, but might be at Bukeur or somewhere else, especially as we get closer to the fall. I may want to be doing more in-person meetings during, during that work. All right. So that moves us to the Chair's report. I wanted to extend my, my thanks and accolades to Roger Smirage, our Town Moderator, Diane Buco, our Town Clerk, and her Assistant Clerks and Check-In Personnel, and Steve and, and his entire staff for what I thought was a actually incredibly able series of meetings last week. Obviously, on Monday night, we had to suspend the Town Meeting because of an unprecedented number of people. In, you know, looking at that situation, to me, it seemed like there was only one reasonable thing for the moderator to decide, which he did decide, and that was to suspend the Town Meeting and to continue it on Wednesday night on the backup date. There would have been at least 200 people who would not have been, who were in line, but would not have been able to vote at Town Meeting because there wouldn't have been room for them. And I think that everybody made, you know, very sound and sensible decisions under pressure. And then all of the people that I mentioned were able to, in the space of 48 hours, pull together the second meeting, which I thought was done, you know, with great skill and logistical work. And so wanted to just commend everybody involved in that and, and also for the members of the public who came to the second Town Meeting and who, I think, you know, most of those folks in talking to them, I think, had the right outlook and perspective on what had happened Monday night. And, you know, there were a few people that we heard from who didn't, in my judgment, have a lot of perspective or grace about the situation that occurred Monday night and were looking to, you know, point fingers and blame people. I also want to say publicly that contrary to some information that we received secondhand, our fire chief did not make the decision to, to call off the Monday night Town Meeting, as the moderator said. That night and again Wednesday night, for those who attended Wednesday night, it was entirely a moderator decision. He's in charge of running the Town Meeting and he properly consulted with the Select Board and with others on Monday night. And as I said, in my mind, made the only reasonable decision that he could have under the circumstances. So again, I wanted to just make that statement for the public and to extend praise to all of the people in the town who pulled that off. Further, I wanted to mention for those that weren't aware that 3A, which has been a, you know, very high-profile issue, of course, going back a couple of years, passed with nearly 70% support. And I think that was, again, an indication, I think, of sound judgment on the part of a very large number of Wenham voters who had to weigh a lot of complicated factors, including a lawsuit that had just been dismissed, including a lot of, you know, information coming from all directions about what 3A is and what 3A isn't. And I think that, you know, we have really smart and savvy voters in town who took all of that information on board and by overwhelming number voted to, you know, to, to put Wenham in compliance with that state law. I see Rick Woodland here, who's a member of the Planning Board, and that reminds me to also thank the Planning Board and Margaret Hoffman and Kate Mallory for all of the work that they did over nearly three years, I think, working on 3A, putting the information out there about it and coming up with a, you know, with a detailed and, I think, excellent zoning proposal for how to implement 3A. With that, I would turn it over to Gary.
Well, I would just echo the thanks to all the staff and tremendous effort there. I'd also like to say we ought to extend great thanks to the Bennett Center that on short notice gave us great cooperation and opened up the facility and provided chairs and assistance as well as their lemonade and so forth, beyond the point. So I think the board owes at least a letter of thanks over to them as well.
So I would also like to echo Ben's comments and thank the staff and the volunteers and everyone who did put on two Town Meetings in one week. It is unfortunate that we had to pause the Town Meeting on Monday night, but as Ben said, I also agree that it was the only call that could be made at the time. I also want to just commend the public and thank everyone. I think historic turnout speaks for itself, but to see the impassioned voters that came to participate in Town Meeting was truly amazing. To see it on Monday night was incredible, but also to see such a robust turnout on Wednesday night. I just want to thank the town, and I know people went through a lot to be able to attend both of those evenings or either evening, and we do appreciate that. Now, Steve stole my thunder a bit, but
Sorry.
I'm going to mention.
Say it better.
As Steve mentioned, the Karen Wolf Memorial Garden, which is adjacent to Bukeur and the Senior Center, is about to be under construction. And as people may remember, this was approved at last year's 2024 Town Meeting after it was approved through the CPC process, thanks to Rick, the Chair of CPC, and the CPC Committee for approving the proposal that Kate and I and our tree warden put together. It did take some time, of course, for the funds to become available in 2025, the contracting to be done. And now we are in warm weather and as soon as school's out, the work is going to begin. So we're very excited to see this finally happen. I do think, however, that we do need to decide tonight about digging the plants because as I understand it, the work is ready to go like next week. So we have to basically give people the okay to dig if they want to over this weekend. So I don't think we need a vote, but just a sense if anyone objects to that.
No.
No, you don't object.
I don't object.
Okay.
Do we want to, when does school, when's the last day of school?
Tomorrow. Yes.
Okay. All right. So that's, that was my, for some reason, I thought it was Monday.
No.
So.
We're done. Yep.
I just wanted school to be out of session before we gave public the okay to go on school grounds. So.
Right. So not tomorrow before, not tomorrow. Let's just say that.
The matter is, is just some trees are coming down next week and then the project, I think, will start the week after.
So I'll defer to Kate, but I think this weekend is the window of opportunity. So unless anyone objects, I think Kate can get the word out on social media.
Great. Karen? Oh, I'm sorry. Did, are you done?
Nope, just thank you to Kate for getting this going and all the contracting and everything that had to be done, much appreciated.
Yeah, I have a couple of items here. Joe, if you want to throw that up. I was contacted by Maple Woods to let us know that we, they had multiple vegetable planters that were completely empty. And so this afternoon, with a collaboration with Iron Ox Farm, as well as the Three Sisters Farms in Wenham and Hamilton, we had over 250 plants that were donated that the girls spent about two and a half hours today planting those directly in the planters as well as on the grounds of the Maple Woods facility. So it's truly a community effort and I just wanted to call them out for doing a great job between the farms and the girls themselves. So I just wanted to make sure that they got some recognition. There is a program that is true to my heart here that the library does every summer in regards to the children's summers program. People in the community will see Kazool, I believe that is, which is these notifications in businesses around Hamilton and Wenham. It is a summer reading program for the kids that get super excited. What happens every week is Kazool, who is the, this year's mascot, is a dragon and he floats around town. He is located at a business and every week they move. As a parent who takes their kid, tries to find Kazool for the week, it's a very fun experience. I am annually disappointed in Wenham businesses and Wenham, essentially just Wenham businesses, that they have chosen not to participate in this. We have seven that were reached out to downtown and they have chosen not to put this eight by four piece of paper in their window or participate with these kids programs. So I'm calling on all businesses in town to really hopefully step up and be able to interact more with the kids during the summer programs. The kids spend the majority of the time in Hamilton and around Hamilton businesses and it would truly be a great community effort, as you can see from these kids, that they will walk around looking for Kazool a lot of times. From a personal perspective, I'll go into the business, we spends money, it's an exciting event for the kids. But as far as community outreach, we have one business in town that is participating, which is unfortunate. They have a big summer block party that's being held on Saturday. Hopefully everyone will make it out there. It'll be a fun and safe event. That's four to nine over at Patton Park, have great fireworks, which is, which are put on. And lastly, we have a resident in town, Sharon Klein, who has made a community request that she is looking for rocks of kindness. People are looking to paint acrylic rocks and drop them off at Sharon's house. If anybody knows anything about Sharon, she has given her life's work to really be able to provide families and children with amazing art programs and projects that she takes on. And it is something that she is now requesting. It would be great if the community can step up and, and provide that to her.
All right, I just have a couple of things to say. One, pretty good pride event at Patton Homestead last weekend, pretty well attended, good food, good music. And then on the sports front, baseball team lost in the semifinals. Been a while since they, it's like almost 10 years since they were in the semifinals. And I was driving over by the high school yesterday and I, I turned in, wanted to take a look at the athletic fields project, and there was a sign as you turned in, like about this big with all different colors, and it said, "2025 state champs because that's what we do." I thought that was a pretty good attitude. And there was a really nice write-up in the Globe about the team. So many kids graduated that it was, they, they actually had a freshman playing and they, they won, they beat Manchester Essex five zip. So Joe Marr was really impressed.
Sorry, Steve. Steve feels badly about the Essex loss, but.
And we can't forget about the girls tennis team.
Yes, right.
Who are also state champions and I believe came in with a
Not this year, I'm talking about the girls.
Yeah, that's Oh, yeah, okay, I thought you were talking about boys.
No, they, they got beaten.
Yeah, I think the girls tennis team for like the fourth year running or something like that.
Four Pete.
Yeah, yeah, congratulations to them. All right, thank you. Is there any reason why we shouldn't move to that one now?
I think we should go to this E.
All right, so we're going to take the agenda a little bit out of order to move to the continuation of the William Fairfield National Grid hearing that was continued on May 20th. We have an engineer here from National Grid who will help answer any technical questions that couldn't be addressed at the last meeting. And I'm sorry, so your name? So Michael, if you could please come up to the podium?
And I just want to update the, Joe went back and watched the tape and compiled the list of questions and provided them to National Grid ahead of time. So, and if that came up last time, when it would be answered, obviously, if there's any additional questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Michael Kazadi and I'm representing National Grid at 44 River Street in Beverly. Do we want to just go to the questions or?
Yes, I think that would be fine. Yeah, I don't know if we have those in a PowerPoint or anything or?
Yeah, Mike, whatever's easier, do you have them or I can read them to you what I have?
Yeah, if you can read them to me, I can answer them.
Sure.
Put them up, Joe, so people online can see what you're talking about.
Yes. Do you want to just give maybe a quick background, Mike, if, in the meantime?
Yeah, sure, yeah. Yeah, so we're petitioning to install new underground cables on Fairfield Drive. Will be, we have two entrance points for this installation. One will be from pole 160 on the corner of Cherry Street and Fairfield Drive and the other entrance will be from pole, that says 57 dash one on Fairfield Drive.
I know the first question is just when will the project commence about? I know the last, last time they said around July 4th or shortly after. Can you give a more approximate time on that?
Yeah, so once I, this petition is either, is passed, it will go to the responsible parties and they will kind of determine a date, but we want to do this anytime before the fall, so to July, August, yeah.
We're just getting the questions up here now.
Yeah, so there you go, Mike, I asked the first one, second one, just a resident asked if there will be a power outage and if so, can you say how long and will there be notice given? I think the last National Grid rep said it was a week or two for notice, but you can, I'm
Yeah, so it's actually each power outage is going to be a couple of minutes. So once we install the new cables, we'll be switching over from the old cables to new cables and our underground crew with, will switch, sorry, they'll switch over the new cables to the, of the old cables to new cables for each transformer, one, one at a time. So each customer will be out for only a couple of minutes, like five minutes. Yeah, it won't be anything longer than that.
Yeah, if you always want to go into order.
Will that be announced because?
Yes.
Concern was given, folks at home that might have medical devices that they're relying on?
Yes, we will, we will notify all the customers in a, a week in advance, or two weeks in advance.
Do you know how that notification is made? Is it an email or written notice or?
I believe it's an email, yeah.
These are people who obviously are National Grid customers already, so there's, the National Grid contacts them through email? In any event, okay.
And I'm sorry, I might have missed your original response there, I was trying to get the questions up, but will there be trenches dug or is it purely horizontal drilling? There was a little bit of confusion last time.
Yeah, so it's actually going to be a combination of both. So we will be trenching from, from the entrance points, from the pole, pole 160 on the corner of Cherry on Fairfield Drive and we'll trench about 20 feet to the first pole box and from the pole box, we'll be doing horizontal drilling the whole way through.
And we sort of talked about this a little bit, but so the residents will be given notice ahead of time. So is there any sort of safety plan National Grid has for that situation when there's power outages or just what your, I guess, general procedure is with that?
So since this one will only be a couple of minutes for each customer, we won't, we don't really have any plans for, I guess.
If something goes wrong with the cables, how will you notify the town that it might be an extended outage?
Well, so we, we will be doing all the work live with the, the old cables being live, so not, we do, really, if anything was to go wrong, we can always switch back over to the old cables, so, yeah.
How many houses are we talking about? Six, seven?
No.
I don't have the answer to that.
Thirty-two hundred feet, I think, was the, the total length?
It's the whole length of, it's Harry.
It's the whole length of
That whole, that whole horseshoe, right?
Sure, okay, got it.
Well, there will be an entry point on Cherry Street for the horizontal drilling, is it?
Yeah, so it's going to be the corner of Cherry Street and Fairfield.
Okay.
And I think further, it was, will there be trenching? One of the questions was, will there be trenching the entire length of Harry Holman's drive or is it just the entry point at the top of, at the top of the street at Cherry?
Just entry point.
All right, and then it's horizontal from there?
There.
And there'll be no crossing, private, like I guess trenching through private yards or anything like that? That's all the horizontal drilling if, if you need to access?
Yes, yeah.
So the safety question was something that I had asked and in the event that the power is more than five minutes and you have residents who are on breathing machines or need medical supplies, is there a backup plan to support them in any way? I mean, if something goes wrong, as Gary mentioned, does National Grid have a backup plan in order to ensure that not only are they notified, but that they get immediate assistance or is that something the town has a plan for?
Well
I just want to make sure some of these folks have been there in their homes for quite some time and if anything goes wrong, you know, what's the, what's the backup plan?
Can I ask a slightly different question? How many times did something go wrong?
Well, since I've been working here, none.
Pretty sure I don't want to have to answer that question.
Another, well, since I've been working here, nothing, nothing wrong has ever gone when doing a project like this, so.
How long have you been working?
Four years.
Four years?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's help them if we understand that.
But it's, it sounds like, it sounds like there isn't a, there isn't a plan, a safety plan to deal with a contingency of, of a lengthier power outage that might result in someone's medical devices or just in general, things that are life safety issues? Is that, is that right? It doesn't sound like there's a plan right now?
No, not really. It's more just if the new cables work to fail, we'll just connect our old cables back up to make sure, to get the power back on.
Are there SOPs, like written SOPs about standard operating procedures about those kinds of contingencies? Because it's, I, speaking for myself, I, I don't feel like I have enough information to move forward with this and I don't know whether there's like written materials that could be provided to us or SOPs that address some of these questions.
I can look into that and get that, yeah.
So there is somebody on Fairfield Drive who needs that. And if anything, regardless of whether or not it's been four years or 40 years, if something goes wrong, that person is in a potentially life-threatening situation. And so what is the backup plan? And I'm in agreeance with Ben, unfortunately, I can't make any decision until I know that our, our neighbors and our residents have the availability to be able to understand how they can take care of their loved ones in the case that regardless of whether or not there's an issue or whether or not we've seen an issue. I don't want to plan for something because there hasn't been an issue. I want to plan for something just in case there is an issue.
I mean, I guess I'm not clear on what the major concern is. I mean, this is what National Grid does. They have two sets of cables, right? He's saying if the new one should happen to fail, you plug the old one back in. So I guess where's the real danger in what they're doing?
I mean, part of it is, is my lack of information about how routine or how simple it is to make that, to make that switch. I mean, I guess that's a question, is that, is, if there's a failure with the, the new line and the old line has been disconnected in order to connect the new line, like how frequent is that, does that happen? And is it, is it a very simple matter of reconnecting the old line or can there be circumstances that would make it more difficult to reconnect the old line and so you're dealing with a much longer outage?
So, no, the switch over is you, we open up our transformers and we, we have both cables already in our transformers and it's just you unplug one and then plug the other one in. So if we, if the new cables were to not work, we could just unplug the new one in, plug the old one back in.
So you said in the, that way back when, when we started talking, it's like four minutes?
Yeah, it's
So if you have to do it again, it's eight minutes?
Yeah.
More or less?
And there are some DPW questions that we haven't gotten to yet.
Yeah, do you want to just talk about what type of equipment you'll be using, Mike? Type of drills, that sort of thing? Just this from the DPW director who's not here tonight, but he had asked those questions.
Yeah, we will be using horizontal directional drill, a vac truck for the trench from the pole to the, the first pole box and, yeah.
And the cables, you might have mentioned, are they being utilized or are you replacing?
So the old cables are going to be abandoned, we're going to leave them in place and install new cables.
And will they be utilizing the same locations of the existing electrical boxes in transformer locations?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Those are all the questions, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. What are the consequences would result, Steve, if we don't approve this tonight? Is there any particular timeline that we're jeopardizing here?
Well, we have their construction timeline. Obviously, they ultimately, if the, if the board denies their request, they can file an appeal with the DPU, which is, you know, the town would have to demonstrate a very significant, you know, safety concern or state a very significant reason. But, you know, as far as, I guess.
I'm talking more about, about tabling the decision.
For a continuous.
Continuing out till the next
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any pressing outside of that construction timeline. I don't, there's nothing pressing on our end that would prevent us from extending it one more week.
We don't have like a DPW director recommend, I mean, the DPW had these questions.
And he's on vacation.
Yes, I mean, he hasn't made any recommendation on this, it sounds like.
No.
So I believe there are some residents of William Fairfield, if we can see if they would like to speak.
Yes, and I saw, ma'am, that you had your hand up, so thank you. You said Michael, right?
Yes.
Sorry, thank you, Michael. Ma'am, if you could come to the podium, please, and state your name and address and your comment or question.
Kathy Fulton, 42 William Fairfield Drive, here with my husband. And we've had problems for years with those boxes, like every time there's a issue, they have to come out, power's off, power drops, it has to be done. This is not like something, oh, let's, it's not only that they're old, it's problematic. And our box has been changed, I don't know how many times, I'm on closer to, to 97. The The questions that I have, a lot of them have been answered. And I trust that what they're going to do, if they've got a transformer there, they're not going to leave and leave the power out. The other thing is if you get a warning in advance and you have, like, our son-in-law who lives in Wenham had electrical work done, he had to come to our house and work at our house one day when they were doing something. But if you have an advance notice, you can plan it in advance and know that, you know, then maybe I'll leave my house or go someplace safe while they're doing this work. So that's one thing, I think, that covers it. And I'm assuming they're going to let the town know along with us. Now, I've never gotten an email from National Grid, because I, I don't know. So I hope they have my email. But that, I would like the town also to reinforce that message, that they could also send us a message that it's, that we're also going to, you know, that it's, the work's going to happen. Yesterday, they marked all the lines on the street. So I was very curious. I talked to the fellow doing the lines and I said, oh, when is it going to happen? My assumption was that they will probably be starting pretty soon if they've already put the lines down on the street. But I think this really needs to have, really needs to get done. I would like two-week notice, so today is the 17th. And my guess is that they, is that correct, 17? They can't start it before the 1st of July or approximately that time. Hopefully not around the 4th of July, because people have a lot of things going on. But I really think it needs to get done. I trust that they know what they're doing. But it is a problem on the street right now that, that that work needs to be done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this? It doesn't appear that there are in person. Is there anybody online?
Nobody on.
Okay. All right.
I think we should approve it.
Yeah, I do as well. And I think if a storm happens and the transformer goes down or the power lines go down, I mean, National Grid is out there to restore the power. I think for something, you know, my sense is that this is routine and that the repairs are needed, as the resident just told us. So I don't see why we wouldn't.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Motion?
Motion. A move to approve National Grid's request to construct a line of underground electric conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across the public way or ways here and after named William Fairfield Drive and further described in the agenda item E of tonight's meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll take a roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Karen?
Without, without more information on safety, no.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I vote no, just because I prefer to have a DPW recommendation before moving forward. But it passes three to two, so. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, residents. So where are we going?
Um, yep, so now we are on the consent agenda, which is routine items for approval in a single motion, allowing them to be passed without discussion unless held. Item A are the January 7th, 2025 minutes, which I believe was the minutes from the meeting where there was a technology failure, I think.
Yes, that was correct.
That's correct, yep. So thank you for those individuals, which might include you, Deirdre, I'm not sure, who helped, and maybe Steve, who helped reconstruct those minutes, since there wasn't audio or video of the meeting. Item B are board and committee appointments, which are listed in the agenda at subsections A through K. So I'd entertain a motion to move those consent item.
Move to approve items A through B in the consent agenda as printed in this evening's agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll take a roll call vote. Gary?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And Ben is yes.
And we should say thank you to all that stepping up to serve again or for the first time. Thank you.
Absolutely, yes.
Is there still open time to speak? I'm not sure how this works.
Um, well, the, the public comment portion is closed, but we're going to be coming next, or two, two agenda items from now. Ms. Kuduski, we're going to be at. Okay, but we are going to be discussing special and annual town meeting venues. I don't know if that's one of the things you want to speak to, but that, that'll be coming up on the agenda. Okay, but next on the agenda under new business is a discussion and potential vote on request from Town Liquor to amend permanent hours of alcohol sales. And I think, Steve, that you have an update on that.
Yep. So, I guess by way of background, I'm sure you're all familiar with the Wenham Town Liquor, Wenham Liquor. And they are a recent recipient of a alcohol license, annual alcohol license. And when they applied, the hours that were placed on the license, and, you know, they knew about it, it was just a carryforward from the prior business that we're assuming that the select board approved the hours of operation at that point. So there wasn't a problem, but they did approach us. And not that there's a problem, but they do have interest in extending their, their, their hours, which we shared with the board, most notably till 11 o'clock at night on, I believe, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evenings. Both the police and fire chiefs expressed concern with that. They said generally, our community and surrounding communities target that 9 o'clock time for a reason. And extending it beyond that would, you know, could bring some unwanted trouble and also would make it somewhat of a destination for folks looking for a package store that's in the area that's open later, since all the other communities are kind of coordinated around that 9 p.m. Yes, Peter?
The liquor store by the train station stays open till 11?
Does it?
Yeah.
In Hamilton.
And so are they requesting to stay open how late?
Until 11 on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, I believe. Right here. So these are their current hours and the new hours, new proposed hours. So those are their concerns. I was unaware, I was just going on the feedback that the chiefs gave me. I was unaware that they were open till 11 in Hamilton. So apologies for that. And.
Yeah, but Hamilton's in a more commercial zone where, where this convenience store, which is why we initially gave them the liquor license, has now turned into a complete liquor store and is in the heart of the residential community at a major intersection. That we are already having speed and traffic violation concerns anyway.
But that speed limit's going to go to 25 pretty soon.
And so the, just so the board's aware that it's under local jurisdiction to set the hours, so the select board can't set the, set the hours. However, there is an appeal process through the ABCC that the business can go through. And talking to our attorney is basically they would have to demonstrate a public need for the extended package hours, which can be difficult.
Any other comments from the board before we turn it over to the public?
No, I'd like to hear the public comments.
Just go ahead.
I was just going to say I'd like to hear the public comments.
Okay, Mr. Woodland?
Rick Woodland, 26 Maple Street. I don't see the need. That area of town, it gets really quiet after 9 o'clock. And I think we kind of like it that way, whether you're living on Maple or on 97. And I don't know if we can affect the speed limit at 97. Isn't that a state road? So I don't know how much input we have on that, but.
Wenham owns it, and so we can, we have enacted it if it dropped.
I, um, my other, my other concern is that I just don't think you need to be doing that. And in general, I guess I missed the part where it went from a beer and wine convenience store to a full liquor store. Not that that bothers me. I'm not a drinker, but I understand that people have the right to enjoy alcohol. But I think staying with the many, majority of the other towns at 9 o'clock and given that once 7 or 8 o'clock comes in that neighborhood, we're quiet. And so I don't think I want to have more people coming in between 9 and 11, because it's the last place open. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. Ms. Felton?
Kathy Felton, 42 William Fairfield Drive. I guess yesterday, when I saw the big sign that said Town Liquor, I said to my husband, what? I thought it was a convenience store with liquor. And I had no idea, I, obviously, you've made that decision. I wish I had a notice about it, but my understanding, it was going to be of the same youth as before. When it first opened, we were all excited. My, my son-in-law with two little, my daughter with two little kids were like, yay, more milk, we can get our milk again. And I went in there and early, and they didn't have too much. They were setting up and they had some beer and wine and a few things. I think they had milk. And then there were flashing lights a few weeks ago. And someone said to me, I didn't, they didn't like that, someone in the neighborhood, and I think they stopped. Then the little signs, flags around that said Town Liquor. And I'm like, okay, it's their opening ceremony. And then the big sign went up. And I thought, you know, honestly, had I known that was going to happen, I would have been in here before saying, we don't necessarily need that kind of a business. As a neighbor here said, it's a quiet area, except for that. Now, think about this also. What's next door to that store? That candy store, who goes into the candy store? People who buy candy, also kids. And I think to myself, why is there a liquor store beside a candy store? And the kids do ride their bikes over there. They would ride to the Rich's and buy their ice creams or get their soda pop. That's a common place. My kids did it when they were little. I just have a real problem that all of a sudden, what was supposed to be, what I assumed was the same kind of a business is now this heavy liquor store. And that's what they're portraying, come in and buy liquor, come in and buy liquor. So, anyway, I'm, I am upset about it.
Hey, Rick, just a question. In terms of signage, shouldn't they actually have to get, go to the planning board to get that approved?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know the ins and outs of signage, but I can ask, I can ask Ann. See if that's under her purview.
We went through a big deal about the signs for Gordon College.
Yeah, I think, I think the sign regulations pertain, though, to, to size, you know, whether they're lit. They're not as to the, you know, the content of what the sign says. And I think to.
I'm talking about the size.
Right, yes, I, I mean, I don't know whether, I'm assuming there's, the size of their signs is within regulations. But if they're not, that's a matter for the zoning enforcement officer to look into.
The sign is smaller than it was.
Okay, so.
And so regardless of what it says, the size of it is smaller.
Okay, that's good to know.
I, I think the other smaller signs might be under the purview of roadside signs and how long they can stay up and what purposes they can be advertising. So, Peter, to your question, the, the sign on the building, I don't believe is very obnoxious, other than it has liquors on it. But there are also smaller, like, select board election signs out in the front. So I think those do fall under the purview of some town department.
Right, yeah, and any citizen can make a request to the zoning enforcement officer to check whether a sign, you know, is running afoul of, of the town's sign regulations.
Got an assignment, Rick?
I did want, excuse me, make one comment in response to your comment, Mrs. Felton, which is that we can't really control, you know, what the business, either what it wants to call itself or how it wants to brand itself. So, you know, the, it's a, it's a retail use that is allowed in, in that location. They, they have the liquor license that enables them to, you know, to sell the products that they're selling. This is obviously a completely different discussion than the, the time. But, you know, whether it's, if the business wants to market itself as sort of convenience store first and beer and wine and liquor is a secondary thing, we can't really control that. And if they want to do the opposite, which seems to be what, you know, what this business has decided to do, there's really nothing that the select board can, can do to control, you know, that particular marketing choice by the, by the business, as long as it's compliant with zoning, which, and with its license, which it appears to be. But are there any other comments about the issue at hand, which is whether to, whether to allow their request to push the closing time out?
I think I'm, I'm not inclined to increase the hours, basically where I'm at.
So I'll read the motion?
Please.
I move to deny Wenham Liquor's request to extend their hours of operation based on the board's determination that there is no demonstrated public need for the extend hours in light of safety concerns raised by both the police and fire chiefs.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll take a roll call. Peter?
No.
Karen?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Ben's yes, so it's a four to one vote in favor of denying the request to extend the hours. All right, that moves us on to item D, discussion on special and annual town meeting venues. Steve, do you want to start that discussion or?
Yeah, sure. So we, um, I mean, this was intended to be broad in a way that, you know, you probably could just talk about town meeting operations in general, which I know there was some good updates from the board members here tonight. But I think the biggest difference, you know, you know, obviously, we had to continue a town meeting on Monday night and then postpone it until Wednesday and reconvene. I think the biggest difference was two very different venues that we utilized. And I thought it would be a good opportunity to discuss those two venues and get, you know, feedback from the board that they've received from the public or from their own perspective. You know, they're just very different setups and different feels. So with that, I'll open it up to the board.
And I would just, to make sort of a couple of other, you know, opening comments about this, and it came up in an earlier discussion, I think, at this meeting. But just so the public is aware, there is no authorization under state law or Wenham bylaws to hold our town meetings outside of the boundaries of the town of Wenham. So for example, we, we can't at this point hold it at the library, even though the library's close to the line, it's in Hamilton. So we are confined at this point by law to a venue that's in Wenham, so just to make that clear. And also, state law does not allow open town meetings, which is the form of government that we have in Wenham and the only one available to us really under state law because of our population size. We're not eligible, I don't believe, for a representative town meeting, for example, which has other flexibility in terms of how people vote. In any event, open town meetings have to be done in person. And the only remote possibility for them is if it's an adjoining room and there's audiovisual contact between the rooms. So I know in connection with what we experienced last week, I, you know, there were people sort of asking about, well, you know, why can't we do remote voting or absentee voting? And it's just not legally permissible for open town meetings. So that's sort of the constraints that we're, that we're dealing with and that many, many generations before us have been operating under as well, in the town of Wenham and in person on the night in question. Gary?
So I think, too, I got a couple of questions about why don't we just go back to the tent? And the, the counterpoint there is that the two times went under the tent, they were under opera funds and the federal government was picking up the TAB. And I believe the TAB was somewhere north of $35,000 just for the tent rental. So that is a very expensive proposition to go that route. And to go outside, too, you end up with all sorts of concerns about accessibility and so forth. So I think we're limited to a building in town. Historically, Buick has always satisfied that requirement. Perhaps we're getting a little bit bigger and look around. But at the current time, there is really one other alternative, which is Gordon College. So it's a matter, I think our decision was right beforehand to stay with Buick. And we have just one backup as it is right now. So that's where we stand for the, the public to understand.
I agree. What is the board's feeling on potentially looking into whether the Bennett Center would be a venue that we would use more regularly than we have? Is there any interest in exploring that?
For like what?
For town meetings.
If as the, the size of the town grows a little bit, perhaps, you know, we need to, you know, judge whether the town attendance is going to rise. But I think right now, I think this town meeting was kind of extraordinary in that we had two very high visibility issues that brought out the population, which was very good. But I would say that the alternative, perhaps, Steve, is, is there a method that through legislation? through legislation or bylaw change, that we could move outside of the town? And I would do that only to gain access to perhaps to the high school, which is kind of half hours, right?
My understanding that a bylaw could take care of that, and you wouldn't need special legislation. What's that, Peter?
What do you mean?
That shouldn't be hard to do.
A bylaw amendment is what you're saying?
Well, you would add, we don't have a bylaw. I don't think that governs it at all. So we would add a bylaw that allows, I think by law, like, I think if your bylaw is silent and you have to host it, like your public meetings have to be within the bounds of the municipality. But we can have a bylaw that allows us to, you know, maybe utilize the high school or, you know, I'm thinking for public meetings, not town meeting, but utilize the library. Like right now, the library is, like Gary said, 50 feet.
Fifty feet, too far.
You know, but we can't use that for a public meeting space. What's that?
It's not very big.
No, the library's not going to-
No, I'm not saying for town meeting. I'm saying just for public meetings. Like the HVAC, for example, that would be probably the best equipped space for having virtual participation of all our spaces, but we can't use it because it's not in Wenham.
All right. So we should change that.
And what are the, what's the process in order to-
It would be a town meeting article.
So next year?
Yeah.
So can we put that on the docket now?
Yes, that's the plan.
All right, so, yes, right. Yes, members of the public, Mr. Woodland.
Thank you. Rick Woodland, 26 Maple Street. Thanks, Steve. That's a great idea. Very much support that idea. And I know everybody was scrambling at the last minute to find another venue. But historically, in my 27 years here in Wenham, there's been a rub between the college and the town over things like taxes and housing and everything else, and including their views on the LGBT community and other religions. And I really just want to be on record that it's not a healthy place. If we're trying to foster community and foster acceptance and foster visibility and foster all those things that make a great small town, I don't believe, maybe recently with their change of management, they support the same type of future that we're looking to build here in Wenham. So my thing, would I be willing to help in any way to create another safe space, either in Hamilton or in Wenham, that we could have these overflow events and actually get access to when we need to. But until then, on the idea of a tent, I don't know what our budget is, but, I mean, you know, we're looking at $135 million school. $30,000, $40,000 once every 20 or 30 years as an expense doesn't seem like a lot of money to spend to make sure that we're keeping this town on the right path forward for inclusivity and equity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gary, just a quick question on that. It's $30,000 a year, right? Not every 10, the rental was 30 grand for the one meeting?
Yes, the one tent.
Okay.
And, excuse me, Steve, and our budget, our town budget is?
25 million.
25 million, and we put about 13 to the schools?
Yeah, roughly on the high side of half.
I just want to put it in perspective. 35, 13, 25. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this issue? Okay, and I don't think we have anybody with their hand raised online. Okay. So it sounds like that maybe the consensus of the board at this point is to maintain our policy of using the Bukeur School as the default town meeting space. But, you know, as we get closer to the next town meeting, which shouldn't be until next spring, that if we were to anticipate the need for a larger venue because of, you know, questions that are on the warrant, et cetera, and the potential for large turnout, it's occurred last week, that we would certainly want to thoroughly consider what the backup venue is. We had a backup venue this time, ready to go, and it was the Bennett Center. It worked out well. And if we're in a position next year where we, you know, need to consider a backup venue and a larger venue, then we can have the discussion at that time, I think, on what that backup venue would be. It probably won't be, we probably won't have had a bylaw change, maybe by then, that would open up the high school, for example, as a backup for the town meeting. But that's something that maybe we would contemplate as being on the next town meeting warrant as a bylaw change extending to, to your point, Steve, you know, places like the library, which would be an alternative meeting space, not town meeting, but public meeting space if needed. And then with respect to the Bennett Center and Gordon College specifically, I think that it would be, and Steve and I have discussed this a little bit offline, I think it would be productive to seek a meeting with the college regarding that venue and just to reengage with Gordon College. Because I do think we had, you know, despite, I think, legitimate misgivings that we heard from, you know, from people in town, including leaders of boards. And, you know, Rick, you expressed that position here publicly. And so I know that, you know, it's something that you expressed earlier as well. So I think we need to take those things into account. But I also don't think we should, I think engagement and dialogue with Gordon makes sense. And so Steve and I talked about potentially having a representative of our board maybe meet with Steve and representatives of the college just to sort of have a dialogue going about issues of common interest and maybe also venue issues. And, you know, the spring board for that might be the town meeting that we just held at Bennett. And I think from a logistical point of view and from a cooperation point of view, as Gary mentioned, it was, you know, successful. So I don't know if there are any feelings of board members on that particular issue and whether you agree that it would make sense to enter into a dialogue with the college.
I think we should also thank the people who did the teardown of all the chairs and tables.
Yes, we had a lot of volunteers who were-
Group effort, for sure, the whole thing. A lot of people to thank.
Ben, I completely support that, and I'm more than happy to help.
Okay.
Likewise.
All right.
Likewise.
Okay, great. So that's something I think that could be, can be organized. And we'll just sort of take it step by step. And Steve, we can look, you know, to you to coordinate maybe the next-
Yeah, I was thinking, I mean, just, obviously, we can talk more offline, but maybe I can draft a thank you letter, which I think the board expressed an interest in sending. I think it makes sense and maybe ask if I could sign it as well. And also maybe include a phrase or a section in there, you know, setting up a meeting or something. I feel like it's a good, like the thank you is the doors open. You know, they've expressed interest in developing a relationship. I feel like they went above and beyond to make sure this meeting was a success. So I think it's a good opportunity to take advantage of.
All right, so I think that concludes that agenda item. The only other agenda item that I think we have left, other than, you know, other matters in old business, would be item F. But before we get to item F, given that Mrs. Gajewski mentioned that she missed the comment that I made at the beginning about public input, does the board have any objection to allowing Mrs. Gajewski to give public comment at this time? Nope?
No objection.
Great. So we'll open that back up. Mrs. Gajewski?
I'm not sure, like I said, where we get all of our information.
Ma'am, would you just, for the record, just your name and address?
I'm sorry, yeah. Marjorie Gajewski, 7 Perkin Street.
Thank you.
Should know me by now. The school district is out of control. It's outrageous what they are planning to do. They are nullifying our four votes of no for this consolidated school. I don't know what Mass General Law's Chapter 71, Section 16N is. Could you explain that to me without taking my time away?
Well, first of all, I think this is something that you should address to the school committee. You're free to make the comments tonight to us. That's fine. But it's, one thing that I do know is that that particular statute, which pertains, I believe the one you're citing, pertains to-
It's something about taxes.
Oh, well, I thought it pertained to a district-wide vote on a debt exclusion. But if that's what you're referring to, it's something that the school committee will be discussing and voting on, I believe, at a meeting on June 24th.
Right. They've changed all their dates around. Would the Select Board be in agreement with them trying to nullify all of our votes? We've showed up, we've shown up for a special town meeting on Monday, and I agree with the fire. I agree with all of that. There was not enough room. It was a danger. But for two days later, that people could not make plans to be there, there were only half as many people there, probably we would have passed the other one. But anyway.
I don't really know what you're talking about, to be honest with you.
The school committee is having another meeting on the 24th, I believe, at, I'm not sure, Bukeur or the library, which just happened to float into my information, which it doesn't come from anyone. How does the school committee tell us this? So how would anybody know to go and actually have a pro or con to that? Why? After four no votes. They're like little kids. Oh, well, we didn't get a wrong way. We'll just go through legal matters and figure it out and do it some other way. It's not fair to the town at all. I don't know whether you are supporting this. I would hope not. We voted. You know, when you vote, you expect your vote to be counted. Hamilton-Wenham School District, always. We always vote in whatever they want for monies. We've been doing that for a long time. I've been in town for 47, 8, 6, 46 years. Always voting. What do they want? They get their money. They have to use it at the end of this, do you know they have to use it at the end of the school year? Or they can't get more money. So they buy things they don't need, and yet they don't keep up the schools, which is the whole thing here, is that the schools are not being kept down.
Mrs. Gajewski, you have 10 more seconds. I'm afraid your time's up. Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
How does the school commit, how can I find out?
Ma'am, your time's up. We have to, we do have a time limit.
You know, no one seems to be able to answer anything. And it's always, your time is up. Everyone else gets to talk.
No, that's not true.
I don't, because you know I have questions and you don't want to answer them. I'm really, I'm so disappointed at this town. I'm so disappointed at the school committee and all the boards in the town.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is item F, review the current process the Select Board uses to sign documents through SignNow to determine if any adjustments or clarifications to the process are needed. Do you want me to start with that?
I can give a quick overview, then you can jump in. So the reason why we put this on the agenda is, there's no written policy, so I don't have any written, but I figured I'd give a verbal overview of generally, over the last few years, we've migrated and rely pretty heavily on a document managing database called SignNow. There's a number of them, but this is how you can gather signatures, electronic signatures, that are in most cases considered as good as wet ink signatures. And it doubles as a document manager. So in the background, we have files based on type and things like that, that file away all our documents. So that in the event of turnover, which, you know, is always inevitable, similar to like when I came here, like, good luck finding a contract. It's like, oh, we're in a contract. What's like, where's, no idea, right? So, you know, in, so this, you know, ultimately, you know, is partially a solution. Obviously, it takes, you know, the people who are running the database. Like, it's not foolproof, but, you know, if you manage it, it's pretty good. But one of the problems that we're running into is that the documents, in order for them to be completed, they have to have all the signatures on them as that they're set up for. So if we set it up for five signatures, I'm just going to use the Select Board as an example, and it goes out, you're tagged in the database, so it has contact information, and your signatures fields are dropped into where they need to go on the document. And then it automatically distributes it via email, gives you an alert that you have a document to sign. Until we get all five signatures, those sit out like in space in a pending status, where you have to go through manually through the list. So, you know, we wanted to look at it because I've gotten concerns from the clerk's office, the finance office, and also in the Select Board's office, where we have a lot of, like, the pending list is just getting, you know, extremely large. So I thought, you know, I'm sure nobody understood that that's how the background works. So I guess I wanted to put some urgency in making sure all the documents are signed. And then also say that there are, you know, alternatives, like to maybe the Select Board doesn't have the time or desire to sign all these documents. Some of the votes can be amended, you know, assuming that the trust is there, that you can move that authorization to me. But on a case-by-case basis, it doesn't have to be an overreaching responsibility shift. But, you know, things like all these appointment certificates that the Select Board will have to go in, like the motion could say, and authorize the town administrator on behalf of the Select Board to sign these certificates. And that might cut down on the amount of, you know, clerical or administrating duties that you have at home. So anyways, I just wanted to open that up on the benefit of anything to add. But that's kind of why I wanted to bring it up here tonight.
Is SignNow used by any other boards or committees in town?
We push, I mean, they do, not as much as the Select Board. I mean, I'm primarily a pretty big pusher. I don't sign anything personally. Like, any document that comes from anywhere, like anyone will know, it has to go into SignNow because I want to make sure that that permanent record is there. You know, we know who signed it, when it was signed. You have all the details. You can forever pull up that original, because it's as good as an original signed document, you know, essentially in perpetuity. It's a backup.
So there's no software availability to just go to a, essentially, majority vote signature? That three out of five?
We don't know. We haven't been able, we don't know how to do that. I mean, so finance operates, they wait, so before they can, just so you know, like the background, before they can move money for payroll or move money from an AP, they can't move money legally without the Select Board's authority. And that authority comes by three votes. So what they do is they'll just refresh it a few times during the day. And once they get that third vote, when they get that third signature, they know they're good because all you need is the majority. But then it sits out there, you know, without, you know, either missing one or two signatures.
So I'm not understanding the problem. I mean, don't we sign Select Board signs pretty quickly?
Not in all instances.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So I have a security system issue. And so from my phone and from my laptop that I work on regularly, it blocks it. So I can't actually get in. And that's purely because, from a business perspective, we use DocuSign. And so they don't allow to have the two programs running simultaneously. I then have to go into, like, my personal Mac at home to log into, which we never use, ever. And so from a signage perspective, it's just, it's a lot to have to do. So what normally, Michelle will be like, "I need this now," and then I'll go in and do that.
So for whatever reason, Michelle has to send SignNow to my Gmail account?
She does that to me all the time, yeah. And through then, I still, it has nothing to do with the platform that it comes. It's that I literally cannot open the document.
Because of a Biogen security issue?
Yeah. And so then I have to, so it takes a little bit.
Yeah.
I need to do that.
That you're talking on your-
You don't have a personal computer?
Yeah, so it, do I have one? I have an iPad that doesn't work. So the only, the only method of me opening that is just to then open that up in a different format. that is, um, just to then open that up in a different format.
But why can't we get you an iPad that works?
It's a good question.
So originally, I think, weren't select board people supposed to be given iPads?
Yeah, I got one. It doesn't work.
Well, let's get it replaced.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, um, to, to have these documents in pending status and the inability of, of Steve and his staff to put them into a final executed document and filed properly is like a big deal. I mean, it's, it, it really, um.
Slows everything down.
Yeah, slows everything down. It creates any number of problems. And so I think it's the, uh, very serious responsibility of each of us to, to sign these things. So, um, I think whether it's a conversation with the town IT department or getting, you know, your iPad up and running, like, it's something that just needs to get addressed, I think.
Yeah, so let's get Karen.
I'm assuming that we're not wasting agenda time just because this falls on me. I'm assuming that there's, uh, more than one, uh, selected member that this is occurring.
No, it's, I mean, it's an open discussion. I'm not, there's not any one, I just, I'm looking for, like, I'm figuring to bring it up because nobody understands what the background is, and why would you?
Right.
And, you know, come up with a solution.
So we'll, we'll get you a.
Your iPad doesn't work, I didn't know that. So we'll work to get the iPad.
And, uh.
And everybody has a deadline of Thursday at 4:30 or whatever we want to set.
Mm-hmm.
To go in and get, uh, do your signatures.
So it is helpful to, to understand the background, because I didn't realize that they sort of stay in the ether. Um, so that's helpful to understand. I do think that this program is incredibly efficient. Um, I find it super easy and efficient to go in and sign off on things. So I would not want to let the system go.
But law stuff too, I would agree that, you know, unless it's legally required, such as on the warrant itself, that, uh, the town administrator, we could delegate authority on law of the stuff to get the, the signatures done.
I was under the impression that once three have signed, that, that the urgency for the, the other two remaining was kind of up in the air. So it was, unless it was things like appointments or, or warrants or things that Michelle, like, throws my Gmail and says it needs immediate, other, other than that, I was under the impression that was three in majority rules.
And that is true to some extent, right? As far as like permission, like if we're looking, like some of these documents, like AP particularly, is like, we're, those signatures are the authorization to transfer funds from the bank. So like, once we get three, in that case, it is true. It's just really, you know, from a bookkeeping or administrative perspective, the background.
But until you get all five, the document doesn't.
Right. Unless we went in and pulled the signatures off, you know, so it's just, I don't know.
Those are two different things.
You know, the other thing is like you have a preferred email that's not a Wenham, or I heard some go to Gmail, it's like, you know, we, we have the flexibility to, to change that stuff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So like, it's, you know, it's just really just an open conversation, like let us know, like what, you know, if we have to make some changes, get you another iPad, like that's.
So, Michelle, I just have one very trivial issue. Can I change my signature? It looks like a five-year-old.
I think they all do on that, Peter.
No, they don't, they don't.
That's awesome.
I took the one they gave me. It's like.
You have the, you have the option to change.
It looks like I had a pencil.
Yeah, but you have the option to change your font.
Yeah, you can change the font.
You can change it, the font. There's like six or seven fonts that you can choose from.
But I agree with you, Dr. on the convenient, I mean, the, it, it's something that I'm able to sign on my iPhone in seconds, once a, you know, if it's something simple that doesn't require intensive review, or once you've reviewed it. I mean, it's, at least for me, the iPhone works really well and it's, you know, it's set up for that. You don't have to, like, squint and it's just boom, bang, boom, in seconds, and your signature's in there and you're done.
And you don't have to drive by Town Hall.
Right.
Yes, we can't go back to that.
Yes.
All right.
All right.
Rick, please. Michelle, I will be, uh, over tomorrow. You can have my iPad.
Uh, Rick Woodland, 26 Maple. I just wanted to, like, uh, think about the historical implications of not signing a document. So like in 300 years from now, when we're researching today, you know, and future generations, I think you'd want to have your signature on there. Even if it's a fake signature, I'd advise trying to find your real signature and get that in there. But I think it'll just look nicer for people who are researching those 300 years from now, that, yeah, they signed it. And they signed, they signed it in a positive way. So that's just an input of, like, keeping in mind history. Thanks.
All right, I think that concludes, um, item F. We do not have any other new business on the agenda, and for old business, it's any other matters that may not have been anticipated by the chair. I don't have any, um, and I, yes.
Do we want to talk about schedules?
Yeah, good idea. So, um, right, so select board meetings for the summer as a start, right?
I think tentatively in prior discussions, we were looking at the 1st and 15th of July, uh, but obviously the, not set in stone, but the summer gets, with, is a long, the way that, the way the Tuesdays fall, is like a long July and a long August. Uh, I will say I'm, I'm on vacation the 1st from the 3rd through the 9th. That's the 1st Tuesday in August. That would disrupt our regularly scheduled 1st and 3rd Tuesday of each month.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm going to keep that in mind.
Sorry, what are your dates? The 3rd, August?
Yeah, 3rd through the 9th of August. That's the only week I'm, I'm off.
Joe's in there.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's the thing, we have the backup, like, I don't need to, I'm not saying I need to be here, but certainly don't.
Let's start in July. So is, Ben, are you out July 1st? Cause I am that week.
Uh, I'm, I'm not out.
Okay.
But.
Thought you said that.
Yeah.
So 1 and 15?
1 and 15, both by Zoom.
I'm away the 15th.
On the 15th, and Karen's away on the 1st.
Um, and I would like to be away on the 15th. I have, uh, floor seats to see Caitlin Clark at the Garden.
So we got, uh, still have a quorum.
Oh shit, that's great.
The rest show.
Yeah. All right.
Oh, go ahead. Yes, Peter?
Nothing, I'll, I'll be on Zoom, but I'll, I'll be in Maine on the 1st.
All right. Well, I think it sounds like we'll have a quorum for both of those dates, so I think we should keep the, the 1st and the 15th, um, for Zoom. Then going to August, um, well, actually, so two weeks later would be July 29th, maybe we skip that and.
Do we want to keep that, cause he's on vacation the next week?
Um, well, it's, um, what do, what do people think? I mean, I think that Joe, Joe will be here on the 5th, but I don't know if, if people have a preference as between like the July 29th and.
July 29th works for me. I'm definitely here.
That'll give us three meetings in July though, which maybe seems a little unnecessary for, for the summer.
We could just do July 8th, 22nd, and then jump to the 12th in August.
The 8th and 22nd both work for me.
Okay, 8th and 22nd.
And then that puts us at the 12th in August.
Was there anything that we were going to do on July 1st that we would worry needed to get done by then or?
Let me confirm with Kate, I, there, there may be a West Wenham Park, Park pending issue, the executive session of last time.
Bucker EV to charging?
Yeah, Bucker EV charging, um, but I think that can wait. But I, far, let me, let me confirm, there may, I don't know what the deadline, she said the, she said the 1st. I don't know, is there a deadline on the Bucker EV? I know for a fact that we had, that the 1st was okay, but I can't speak for certain that the 8th is also.
All right. Um, so do we want to tentatively plan for the 8th and the 22nd instead of the 1st and the 15th?
Because, I mean, yeah, that's fine. And like honestly, I'm, I'm probably going to miss the 8th. We could do a quick, obviously, I mean, scheduling allows a quick five or 10-minute meeting.
Before then, if we need to.
Before then, if we need to, yeah.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Um, will we have a quorum on the 8th and the 22nd? Sounds like we will.
Yes.
Right, okay.
22nd, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so the 8th and the 22nd of July at 6:30.
Zoom.
By Zoom. I think that maybe on one of those dates, perhaps July 22nd, we should have an agenda item to talk about, in-person meetings and where those might take place once we get into the fall, given that we won't be able to hold meetings here, it sounds like until close to Thanksgiving. Um, all right, and then do we want to talk about August?
Ben, I.
Meetings?
We've the August normal dates, the 5th and the 19th.
So the 22nd, 5th, and the 19th.
Or do we want to move it to the 12th and the 26th?
I like that, like I watched Joe.
I like the earlier ones. I'm definitely going to be in Maine. If you do the 26th, then you're going to mess up September.
Yeah. All right, so the 5th and the 19th, and at 6:30, and those would likely be by Zoom, although maybe we'll make a final decision on the location when we talk about it in July.
Are we scheduling our goals meeting? Isn't that coming up?
We're going to, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I think we were to try to integrate that into one of the evening meetings. Given the open items, the belief is that, uh, there'll obviously be conversation around it, but a significant part of next year's goals are kind of already laid out for us, projects that are up in the air.
Great. All right, any other, um, old or new business? No.
Move to adjourn at 8:11 PM.
Second.
Peter?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ben is yes. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.